Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is September 17th at 9:30, and this is our regular meeting of the Ottawa City Commission. Could we have the rule call, please?
Mayor Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Present.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Kaler.
Present.
Okay, we are all present and accounted for. I would like to welcome everyone that's in the chambers this morning, and also anyone who might be listening on the radio, or watching on government access channel, or watching as we livestream it. We also have our closed captioning of our meetings nowadays, so that's a great thing for those that need that. We're going to begin the meeting this morning with a pledge of allegiance, and that will be directly followed by our invocation, which this morning will be led by Pastor Jim Robinson of the Buffalo Ridge Retreat, who is also a former Navy chaplain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you praising you this morning, for you truly are a great God, and you've told us to praise you continually, everywhere we are. I pray that you would bless us today with your presence, that you would work in the minds and hearts of the council, and that they would decide each issue according to what is best for your people, and what maintains the freedom that we all cherish so much. I just pray that you would be with us during this time when we seem to have lost a lot of freedoms, and I pray that we will get them back quickly. I pray that you would bless us, keep us in your will, and may we be worthy, even though we know we can't be worthy. May we be worthy insofar as we can of your blessing and your presence, for we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We will begin the meeting this morning with a consent agenda, which is item six and seven. You have many sets of minutes on your consent agenda. They are minutes from the July 7th, 14th, 21st, July 28th, August 4th, 11th, 18th, 25th, and then also study sessions. Those are the study sessions, and then July 16th, August 20th, September 3rd, regular meetings, as well as the July 28th, and August 6th, and September 3rd, special call, city, county summit meetings. Carolyn has been a very busy person, so I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda and the minutes have been approved. That moves us on to public comments. Do we have anyone registered this morning?
May I?
Okay, then we will dispense with reading that paragraph, and we'll move on down to item nine, which is declaration. And at this time, I'd like to give commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's issues impartially. Anybody? Okay, item number 10, then, please.
Proclamation for no texting while driving. It can wait day.
This proclamation reminds us all that distracted driving is dangerous driving. To promote the safety and welfare of everyone in our community, please do not text while driving. Bethany Hoffmeyer of the Ottawa High School Safe Teacher Sponsor will accept the proclamation. And Commissioner Dickinson is going to read it this morning, and you can come on up, and as soon as he's done, you can come up and accept that, and then you can have the podium.
Okay. This proclamation reads, "Whereas public safety, including the reduction of fatalities and injuries resulting from motor vehicle accidents, is the top priority for the city of Ottawa, and whereas texting has become a preferred mode of communication for both younger and older Ottawa residents alike, and whereas the American Media Association called text messaging while driving a public health risk, citing a study that found text messaging while driving causes 400% increase in time spent with eyes off the road, and whereas, according to the National Safety Council, more than 100,000 crashes a year involve drivers who are texting, causing countless life-changing injuries and death, and whereas a driver who sends a text message while driving not only jeopardizes his or her own safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers, and whereas the state of Kansas has already shown tremendous leadership by passing a state law banning texting while driving, now therefore, the governing body of the city of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby proclaim September 19th, 2014, as No Texting While Driving It Can Wait Day, and encourages all Ottawa residents to take the It Can Wait pledge and commit to refraining from texting while driving. Signed this third day of September 2014 by the mayor."
Bethany, if you'd like to come up and accept this proclamation, and then if you'd like to say a words to us, a few words to us about your program, thank you very much. I hope you want your picture over here. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for this proclamation. My safe students have been working really hard to improve the safety of the students at Ottawa High School. They've done a lot of promoting of wearing seat belts and also not driving distracted. So it's really good for these kids to know that they're getting support from you, and then also from the rest of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and we appreciate their efforts. It makes all of us safer as well. Thank you so much. I know the city of Manhattan, you can't even be on your cellphone speaking, so that would be a huge culture change, so we're making steps in the right direction. Thank you very much. Item 11, please.
Proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd.
Constitution Week is an official week to commemorate the anniversary of the creation of the world's longest-lived written constitution. Members of the General Edward Hand Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution are attending this meeting this morning, and Vice Regent Nancy McNicky will accept the proclamation. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas September 17th, 2014 marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas in 1956, at the urging of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution Congress set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week, to emphasize every citizen's responsibility to protect and defend the Constitution, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage, and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787, and whereas public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the governing body of the city of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd to be Constitution Week in Ottawa, Kansas, and asks our citizens to reflect upon and reaffirm the ideals that the framers of this Constitution had in 1787. Signed this 17th day of September 2014 by the mayor. And Nancy, if you'd like to come up, and then you can also introduce any guests you might have with you. Do you accept this, and you can say what you would like to for us? And he wants to get your picture here. Hey, thank you.
Mayor Reed, city commissioners, and city staff, I would like to introduce our members that we have here. We have Lorraine Kristen, Barbara Dew, Emily Cook Patrick, and Elaine Oakley here today. I just want to, on behalf of the Daughters of the General Edward Hand Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, would like to accept this proclamation, and it is recognizing the Constitution of the United States of America, and the many freedoms we experience are because of this Constitution, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see, could we have item number 12, please?
Proclamation for Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce Week, September 22nd through the 26th.
This proclamation recognizes the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce as a continuous force in the Ottawa area for 115 years. John Cohen, President and CEO of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce, will accept this proclamation, and our Mayor Protam, who represents the city commission on the chamber board, will be reading the proclamation.
Sure. Proclamation reads, "Whereas Ottawa Chamber of Commerce is the longest-serving economic and community development organization in Ottawa and Franklin County, having been a continuous organization for 115 years, which was organized in 1899, and whereas the organization was originally called Ottawa's Commercial Club and Board of Trade, and located on the third floor of the Hamblin Building at Second and Main Streets, just one-half block from the current location, 192nd Street. Whereas the Commercial Club existed until 1905, at which time the Ottawa Businessmen's Association was formed, which led directly to the organization of the Chamber of Commerce, which was officially incorporated in December 11th, 1929. And whereas the name and the organization changed in 1979 to the Greater Ottawa Chamber of Commerce, and again in 1987 to the current title of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce has been a continuous force in the life of the Ottawa community, having championed efforts such as flood control, Interstate 35, highway development improvement, city street improvements, downtown revitalization, industrial parkland development, advocating for new schools and housing developments, and many other initiatives over the course of history and time. Therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Ottawa, do hereby proclaim the week of September 22nd through 26th, 2014, to be the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce Week in the city of Ottawa, Kansas, in recognition for the hard work and dedication of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce. Signed this 17th day of September 2014 by Honorable Mayor Linda Reed."
Congratulations. Let's stick out your picture there. Thank you. You can have the podium.
Honorable Mayor Reed and honorable commissioners, it's with great honor that I accept this on behalf of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce, and want to take the opportunity to say thank you for being great community partners in all the endeavors that we have worked on down through the course of history. I think that we can honestly say that we've improved the life, or the amenities, the quality of life in our community, and it's through a partnership that's been forged over a number of years. And we have a number of events that are taking place that week, and hope that you all, as well as city staff, and anybody in the community, will take the opportunity to participate in some of the many events that we have going on, to say thank you for being a member of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for the partnerships that we have forged down through history. Appreciate it.
That will move us on to item 13.
A resolution adopting the Region J Kansas Multi-Hazard Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
The city of Ottawa desires to comply with the requirements of the Disaster Mitigation Act, and to augment its emergency planning efforts by formally adopting the Region J Multi-Hazard Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And Mrs. Lee, are you going to introduce this, or do we want to have Alan Redcliffe introduce it?
I can introduce it while Alan comes forward. This is a plan that we've worked on before, and had several updates to it this year, and we have a good partnership with Franklin County.
Alan, for the people that are listening that might not be familiar, if you can just kind of give us a brief summary of what it is that we're voting on, it would help them, I think.
Yes, I can. Thank you for asking me to be here this morning. We currently have a mitigation plan. It's four years old, and you adopted that county plan four years ago. The state last year started a new project for multi-jurisdictional plans. Our county, along with six other counties, are in this multi-jurisdictional Region J plan. It kept all of our projects that we had from the last plan, added any others that we wanted to add into it. So really, it doesn't do anything any different than our last plan, other than add six other counties to it, and to save our county about $45,000 to $60,000, because the state's paying for the plan.
We can handle that, can't we? Can you give us an example, like maybe what one of those projects might be? Just a basic example, or not?
Well, one of the things for the city of Ottawa, Ottawa is kind of unique. In our county, they're the only city that is protected by levees from flooding. None of the other cities that are near the river have any type of levee to protect them. And I believe one of the projects, and Wendy, correct me, but it does affect maintaining those levees, and making sure that they pass inspection. One of the other projects that covers, I believe, every city in the county is installation of the outdoor warning sirens. We've already had mitigation funds in the last couple of years come to, city of Ottawa, for instance, received the one that was placed at the south end of town where the new Love's Truck Stop is at. So those are projects, and mitigation funds, when they're available, they come after a large disaster occurs in the state, and those funds then become available for certain types of projects, and we have to meet that grant guidance, and it's a 75-25 split generally, with 25% being paid by the local jurisdiction.
Well, we appreciate your work on this, on behalf of us, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Before we entertain a motion, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Redcliffe before? Well, thank you for coming, we appreciate it. And at this time, I would entertain a motion, then.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion. We go ahead and adopt this resolution for Region J, as specified in number 13.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, which is outlined in item 13. Is there any discussion? Could we have the rule call, please?
How do you vote? Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries, and we did adopt that resolution, then. The next things on our agenda, we have four different resolutions that will be presented by Wendy Lee. If it's okay with the commission, we'll go ahead and have her present all four of those, and then we will go back and entertain a motion for each individual. Well, we could also do one motion for all four, that will be up to you, but we'll hear the findings first for all four properties.
What do you want, off or on?
That's fine.
Off, okay. Good morning, commissioners. As you know from talking about this briefly at the study session, the action before you today is to pass resolutions calling for public hearings, at which time owners, agents, neighbors, anyone else who has an interest in the property can come discuss with us their concerns or their efforts to improve them. The, I apologize, that is not the right slide. Let's see if we have, yeah, no. Let me just do this without slides, apparently.
You want my packet?
No, I have the packet, but it doesn't match, so. The properties that we are here to talk about today is 115 South Poplar, 731 South Oak, 935 East 9th, and 619 South Elm. 115 South Poplar was damaged by a fire February 6th of this year. The owner indicated doesn't have the money to repair it, it is a mobile home, and so we'll call a hearing and see if anyone steps forward to make repairs, or whether or not that'll be a situation that the city is then positioned to remove. 731 South Oak was also damaged by a fire in January of this year. We haven't had any contact or response from the owner on this property, and the structure has a large amount of debris inside, and makes it uninhabitable. 935 East 9th was damaged by fire February 21st, 2014. The interior of the structure is completely gutted. The owner was informed the need to get a contractor to oversee the project, and at this point, we have not talked to one. And 619 South Elm has been vacant since June of 2013. You'll recall, we removed a carriage house at that structure previously. We haven't had any further contact from the owner. It looks like they started to do a remodel, but didn't finish, and they did not have a permit. And in all of these cases, the purpose of the hearing is for them to come forward. If anybody has an ownership interest in these properties, and they'd like to talk to us about their plans to repair or remove, they may do so, and resolve the situation even before the hearing. But in the case that they do not, then other folks can come in and indicate why they believe those structures may pose a hazard to their neighborhood, or why staff believe that they do, in order to encourage, put time limits on the owners to take action, and if they fail to do so, then at that point, the city would have the ability to do that before the end of the year. But it will take some time. This does call for hearings in November, I'm not looking at that, November 5th, and so that's our first meeting at night, and that's an opportunity for folks to come and do that. Any questions?
Wendy, can you tell the public, obviously, public money is used when we do a condemnation, and so public taxpayer money is used. Is that money, is there any kind of avenue in which that money can be recouped?
Yeah.
And how do you go about doing that, if these properties are actually condemned?
Sure. Actually, we have been fortunate, you budget about $25,000 a year for demolition. We condemn six to eight to 10 structures a year, depending on the year. Most years, we don't spend all that money, because we're fortunate that most property owners then take action to either repair or remove it themselves. Should they fail to do it, it does put us in a position where we can act then, and we demolish the structures and clear the site, then we put a lien on the property. Okay, so oftentimes, we tell you the state of the taxes, partially to let you know if they've already signaled that they are no longer interested in managing the property. And if that's the case, oftentimes, those properties then go to tax sale. On occasion, we still get the fund back if the tax sale produces that kind of revenue. If it doesn't, then the funds are gone. But we get funds back on these, I can't give you a percentage, because I haven't looked at that, but we do get repaid at the times, but there are also a lot of circumstances where we don't have to invest city dollars in those structures, because the owners then take that on to get resolved. Or they sell it. I mean, it's not uncommon for a property then to go ahead and move to a sales position. Someone else takes it on, and then the city, again, does not have to spend any further dollars on it.
Questions? Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
In an effort to save time and duplication, I would move that we adopt the resolutions described in items 14, 15, 16, and 17, and consider them as one vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it has been moved to approve the four resolutions, and I'm just going to list the addresses, 115 South Poplar, 731 South Oak, 935 East 9th, and 619 South Elm. And these resolutions are to establish a public hearing for the consideration of condemnation of these properties. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Can we have the vote, please?
How do you vote? Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes, and the resolutions are approved. Thank you. And item number 18, please.
Resolution to call a public hearing on TIF project plan at 19th and Princeton.
This resolution establishes a public hearing to be held at 5:30 PM on October 20th of this year for the consideration of a project plan for the tax incremental financing plan at 19th and Princeton. And Mrs. Lee will talk to us about this one.
As you all know, when we established a district several months ago in the south area, we were calling it 19th and Princeton, but it's from 19th and Princeton down past the gas station there, that diamond shape in our mapping, between the Princeton Circle and Princeton Drive lanes of travel here in Ottawa. This is a project area that would be on the north end of that, the site of the proposed new Price Chopper store, so this is the project specifically related to that project, for improvements to the lanes of travel of Princeton and Princeton Circle, as well as the installation of 19th Street and sidewalks, and other improvements, as well as the site work for the project. The purpose of the resolution today is to call a public hearing for a discussion about that project, and how the funds would be used. In order to do that, the Planning Commission also considered the project and passed a resolution indicating that this project is in conformance with our plan, our plan and future directions of that area. The project plan has reference to feasibility study, which was conducted by Ellers and Associates Contract, the contractor for the city, and we would have all of those documents available if folks would like to review them. But the project is roughly a 50,000 square foot, 54,000 square foot building, with the potential of some additional retail at a later date, primarily around that grocery store. So this action just calls the hearing for Monday, a special meeting, Monday, October 20th at 5:30, and as we shared with you on Monday, we do anticipate there would be another public hearing that night, as well as some additional actions, all related to the same project.
Any questions for Mrs. Lee? Do I hear a motion, then, for this resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move that we approve the resolution to call a public hearing on the TIF project at 19th and Princeton.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
It's been moved and seconded to call the public, for the resolution to call a public hearing on October 20th at 5:30 for a special call meeting. Is there any further discussion? Can we have the rule call vote, please?
How do you vote? Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Item 19.
A request to execute an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation to participate in the federal fund exchange program.
This is a voluntary program that allows local public agencies to exchange federally allocated dollars in a specific federal fiscal year with KDOT, in exchange for state transportation dollars. A portion of the federal aid transportation dollars that are made available to the state of Kansas are shared with local agencies. The total amount of funds allocated on behalf of the city of Ottawa is $148,828.42, 90% of which is $133,945.58. Mr. Byrd?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a program the city has been involved in for a number of years. As you are aware, the state of Kansas has a program whereby we can receive, in essence, what are federal dollars, but we exchange them for state dollars, 90% of the federal dollars we would have been receiving. But the upside for us is that we receive them much quicker than we would if we were banking them, which was the practice in the past, and it also allows us more flexibility to do the streets and the work that we want to do, as opposed to being restricted by all of the federal requirements. And so, as we have done in the past, this issue's been brought to you, as you indicated, Mayor Reed, the amount of dollars that we would be receiving is almost $134,000 to be put back to the streets, and we can partner that with the special highway gas tax money that we already receive, and hopefully keep moving forward on doing the street work and so forth that we've been doing over the last few years.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Byrd? Can you persuade your information on that?
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move to execute the agreement as described in item 19.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And it's been moved and seconded to execute the agreement with KDOT for the federal fund exchange program. Is there any discussion? Okay, a hearing, then. Could we have the rule call vote, please?
How do you vote? Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries. So we will execute that agreement. And one final resolution, and item 20.
A resolution calling for the sale of temporary notes.
The resolution for the sale of temporary notes to pay for the balance of the Ottawa Municipal Airport Tea Hanger project in the amount of $540,000. Mr. Byrd will also explain this.
Well, last Friday, actually after 5 o'clock last Friday, we received the pleasant news that the city had been awarded the grant funding for the Tea Hanger project out at the airport that we had requested. The total project cost for this effort is $832,600, as estimated by our engineers. The federal grant award is for $318,200, so that there is a balance needed of 514,400. But that does not include issuance cost, or some other sundry costs that we may run into. And so, to be able to fund this entire project, we are asking for approval, a resolution this morning, for a total amount of $540,000 to issue temporary notes, and what we will do at a later date then is partner this amount with a larger bond issue and go to a full market. What our finance advisor, David Artterbury, with George Bauman Associates, has recommended is that we is that we do this almost as a private placement. We go out with a much smaller effort, if you will, on his part, on my part, and just solicit local and regional banks to see if they would be interested in purchasing these notes. And I can tell you that, having been in contact with Mr. Artterbury this morning, he's very encouraged by what he is finding out. So I think you all will be pleased when this all shakes out. So the resolution before you is to authorize us up to $540,000 and to establish a public hearing in October, October 15th, at our regular meeting at that time. One last thing is, I don't think we're going to need the entire $540,000, but we're going to leave it at that amount for now, just as a safety net.
Mr. Byrd, just for clarification, does our resolution this morning need to include that public hearing request as well?
Yeah, it should.
The resolution does include that in the body of the resolution.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Byrd? Or any comments?
I have a question. So we're going to bid this out for the loans, possibly local banks. And I guess, second question for legal counsel, should we, or anybody that represents a bank here on the panel, abstain from voting on this?
On setting the hearing?
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Just on the voting, okay.
Should you submit a bid, and there would be some sort of vote at the conclusion of this, then perhaps. But at this stage, absolutely.
All right, we're good there. All right, just want to clarify that.
Good question.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion then.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the resolution as described in item 20 of the agenda.
Okay.
I will second that.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution for the sale of temporary notes in the amount of $540,000, and also to set the public hearing on October 15th for the sale of these notes. Is there any discussion? Can we have the vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
This moves us on to a report by our City Manager. Mrs. Lee is sitting in for Mr. Neistep this morning. Do you have anything to report?